Good evening and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Levonia Public Schools Board of Education for April 15, 2019. We have a relatively short agenda tonight, but anybody sitting in the audience who wants to follow along with our agenda, you can get them out on the table, but I don't see we have a big audience tonight. Anyone watching at home who wants to follow along, you can go to our website, levoniapublicschools.org, highlight over the Board tab, and you will see agendas and you can highlight and follow along with us. If you're looking for greater discussion on items that are coming before the Board, this is the meeting to either attend or watch because this is where we get into a little more of the nitty gritty, get more of the facts, and have greater discussion on the issues that are going to come before the Board at our regular voting meeting. So this is the one you want to be at, and as I indicated, we don't have a very long agenda tonight. So I'll start with Item A, Audience Communication. I do not have any blue slips. I don't see anyone coming to the table with a blue slip, so we will move to Item Two, Committee of the Whole, and I do not have anything. Is there anything you have, Mrs. Oakquist?
I do not. President Johnson.
Very well, then we'll move on to Item Three, Building in Sight, and I will turn it over to Mr. Centers, our Chair.
Absolutely, thank you. Item A, Mrs. Scott will be our presenter, and it's the purchase of flexible furniture for Coolidge, Rosedale, Cooper, Johnson, and Webster from the 2013 bonds. Mrs. Scott.
Thank you. It is with great pleasure that I once again bring forward for flexible furniture for five elementary schools using the 2013 bond funds. Once again, for review, these purchases are a Phase III item targeted for elementary furniture to supplement the student furniture previously purchased using the 2013 bond funds, and each quote utilizes the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance Discount Program available to education institutions which satisfies the district's bidding requirements. All five schools formed a school committee, gathered input from staff, and worked with vendors to create a flexible furniture plan to enhance the learning spaces for students and to provide seating options. Four schools consulted with interior environments to design a plan unique to their schools, and one school consulted with business interiors by Staples. The first school is Coolidge Elementary. Their plan includes furniture for their little theater, collaboration room, lobby, and art room, and their proposal totals $38,822.07. So as you can see in your packet, they have quite the array of furniture, again, for students to be able to use in different settings. So there's a picture in the little theater. That area, for those of you who know Coolidge, is where the -- part of that area where the kindergarten eat lunch, and so they have a little area back in there that they kind of refer to as their little theater. Collaboration Room, that's kind of diagonal from the LMC entrance. It's in that main section, if you were to look at their map, from where the office area is in their leveled library. So there's a space there for collaboration. And then their lobby, they don't have a large area for lobby, but they do have hallway there, so they're putting in some of those kinds of seating that, if you notice, that we have seen before with the pullout area underneath that they can put some different things there that students -- you can have for students to use. And then the art room, this one's a little bit more unique than what we have seen before, so able to have some butcher block art tables along with stools. So really kind of a cool option, something different that we haven't seen. At the second school is Rosedale Elementary. Their plan includes options for student storage in the classrooms along with different seating options, and their proposal totals $25,259.57. Theirs does not look to looking at only certain spaces, but they decided to put theirs into the classroom. So there's different options here, so it looks a little convoluted because they had to have their storage cubbies and their mailboxes to be sized according to the spots that they would fit in the classroom. So there was a lot that went into this one because what, one mailbox area would fit in one classroom, that size would not fit in another. So it was quite detailed where they thought they were going, and then ended up that it took a lot more time. On back into the pictures in your packet, there's one area with the leveled library. There's some different seating there, again, that we haven't seen before, and then also classroom furniture with the stacking floor seating. So if you can stack it up, it doesn't take up much space, and then when you separate it out, then you're able to use it with individuals. So against some -- like seeing some of the unique ones that we haven't seen before. The third school tonight is Cooper Upper Elementary. Their plan includes furniture for their Maker Space, which is right off the library, their lobby area, and creating a collaboration room, which is right down the hallway from the office. Their proposal totals $42,956.63. So some of this furniture, you've kind of seen some similar before. So in the Maker Space, if you've been to the Maker Space, you can just kind of imagine this kind of dressing it up even more so than what they've already been successfully been able to implement. So there's a couple of pages showing that. And then the collaboration room area for chairs and some tables and such for them to bring in either small groups or partial classrooms down to that area. And then the lobby looks like a high-top table as well as some seating there. And I know they have a lot of times students who are waiting on rides and such for that area. The fourth school tonight is Johnson Upper Elementary. Their plan includes furniture for their large group room, their commons area, their vestibule, and the office lobby. Their proposal totals $38,784.24. So the large group room has some high-top, a little bit different stools, or not stools, but tall chairs than what we have seen before. Some of the different parts of the seating and such we have seen at a couple of the schools. In the commons area, that's that large area right outside the office there, and so this will really dress that up area up really well. I've seen classes there end up sitting on the floor and such when they're kind of gathered in there, so now they'll actually have a seating spot. And their vestibule, again, they have just a couple of chairs and such, table and chairs, a couple of benches, so that when students are waiting for their rides. And then the office lobby, I'm not sure exactly what those -- I can't remember what those are called, but kind of like a toadstool type knockoff from the old hokey stools, in a matter of speaking, so yeah. With some seating. And the last school tonight is Webster Elementary, and they are the ones who consulted with business interiors by Staples. Areas that will be impacted by this purchase include the common areas located in different parts of the school and shared by Family One, Two, and Three in Act 18. And there's also some purchases that will be used within the existing classroom, and their proposal totals $28,035.83. So Ms. Boka was kind enough to kind of take a hold of the picture that they had given and kind of Family One and Two area, they have a couple of tables with area put -- almost like you're getting ready to eat lunch, you know, someplace at a diner. And then you have some seating there in the middle and some bench-type areas. Turn the page, and then you have a Family Three area in Act 18, and there's a couple of table setups there. On that next page, you'll see where it says Norval Nivell or whatever. That particular thing, I want you to notice the holder for the iPads. They have purchasing some of those so that then you can put your iPad in them, and then it sits there then while you are either reading or doing, you know, instead of either having to hold it or it being flat down on the ground. I thought that was really cool because we haven't seen that before. And then on the next page, it shows this tablet holder, but then there's a Norval board, and Ms. Boka explained this to me, that it's kind of like a balance-type board in a way that when they are standing at the stand-up desk, that they can stand on that. So I thought, oh, I might have to go over and try that a couple of times, so. The total of all five quotes is $173,858.34. I'm requesting that these flexible furniture plans be placed on the agenda for the April 29 regular meeting.
Okay. Any questions?
Just, we're aware of this table, but for any of the public that might be listening, this is bond funds, and these were -- Mrs. Scott, if you could explain how the funding works for these furniture?
For each of the schools? So that each one of the schools received a base allowance, and then for each student, depending upon their enrollment, that was based on last March, that's how much they ended up with as a total. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, basically, yeah, so the public ought to see what's, you know, how the funding mechanism works for this. Yeah, this is, these are bond funds, but they're allowed to be purchased -- the items are allowed to be selected by each school based on what they specifically need and how it would enhance their specific student body.
Yes, the main, the, it was just very clear that it was supposed to be for students. It's not for adult use, even though adults will be sitting and using too, but that it's, the basic purpose is for students.
And this was part of the instructional materials portion of the budget from the bond. So as you may recall, we put aside dollars for musical equipment, science equipment, other instructional equipment, and as well as the furniture budget, and so that was all part of the instructional materials budget. So when we completed the purchase of the classroom furniture, the desks and tables and chairs, and had some remaining dollars, the directors thought it would be really advantageous if schools could have some opportunity to come together with their staff and determine what the needs might be and provide some opportunities for flexible furniture options. And each school has really done a very unique look at their school and come up with some very creative options.
The schools are very excited, and the schools that have received them have just, you know, been elated, and everyone else is just anxiously awaiting, so after this group, we'll have five more schools left.
Oh, wow. And do you know when this furniture will be delivered? Would it be before the end of the school year, or are we looking for a fall delivery?
It's, it goes anywhere from like five, six, seven weeks. So five to eight weeks, we ought to be good.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else? All right, and that will go on for our regular agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Item B, Roofing Design and Construction Services Firm. Mr. Francis and Mr. Scott will be generous.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On Letter B, the Roofing Design and Construction Service Firms, one quick note in your pack, and I think that when you received it, you were given this note, but the packet was done in black and white with the maps, and then the Board members received a supplement in color because it is colored. in color, because it is color-coded, just for your information. With regard to the agenda item this evening, Roofing Technology Associates is the RTA, more commonly known as, is the company that, as I can refresh your memory and the viewers at home's memory, is a company that had done all the, or created, been on all roofs and created a very thorough review of the status and conditions of all the roofs in all the buildings across the district. Subsequent to that report, and subsequent to creating a weighted system to help us develop a 10-year roofing replacement plan based upon worst condition to relative best condition of all the roofs. We later decided to, and the board had approved RTA to do design work as well as construction oversight with regard to the first project last summer in '18 at Holmes, and they also did the design for Johnson Upper Elementary, which this summer, we're excited to be doing the re-roofing project there. So that sort of brings everybody up to speed. This evening, what we're bringing for discussion is a recommendation for RTA to, again, be re-engage as a roofing consultant, designer, and also be sort of the district's eyes and ears during the summer at the construction end of it. They're not the ones that are going to be doing the roofing, we'll put that out to bid, but they would be overseeing their work and making sure that whatever company does win the bid would be adhering to the design of whatever it is that LPS has put out. So we're bringing you tonight two items, or the same item, but two different proposals or contracts to engage RTA. With that brief setup, I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith and let him give a little bit of detail about the two items that you haven't brought to you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis, and good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Hello. As Mr. Francis spoke, so we've got two proposals here spanning five different facilities. What we did is we looked at the condition index and determined, you know, what are the next projects in the foreseeable future? We've also talked in the past about, you know, picking away one roof at a time really isn't going to get us through the district in a timely fashion. How can we look at that? How, you know, just because of a school, some of these are, you know, the condition index might have been 40 versus 41, they're pretty equal to equal, so we had to look at it a little bit in terms of dollar value. Maybe one was 50,000 square feet as an elementary, and the other was 41, but it was 110,000 square foot middle school. So we tried to kind of take the next five buildings and kind of create a system that gets us kind of to an equal amount between the two years. And working with RTA, they have done a great job. We've been very satisfied with the design. I think they do a very thorough investigation of the roof. Obviously, they have good knowledge of the facilities from their previous walkthroughs on the sites. The reason we're bringing it to you tonight is we really want to get them going, and there are times of the year where they're busier, and there are times where they have opportunities to kind of start this design, and we wanted to kind of jumpstart that, which also puts us in a good position to kind of get out towards the front of the pack in the fall to get these things bid out, hopefully, and get some advantageous pricing for the district.
We've seen them getting bid earlier and earlier. As early as we bid the Johnson project this past fall, we were talking to some of the companies, who said, yeah, we're already putting in bids elsewhere, and there's something due next week, so many districts are trying to get on the fall, so we're trying to stay with or out ahead of all that, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. It's a vicious cycle. Everybody wants to be first, because in theory, it gives you the best pricing, gives you the most exposure to the bidders, you know, before some of their books fill up and they're no longer able to take on work. So we reached out to RTA, and they are under contract. This is a sinking fund project, and this would be funded out of the sinking fund. They have agreed to maintain their, the same rate as their past, their original contract plus the design work for the summer, which is approximately 2.8% of the budgeted cost. We've got some good budgets from the bids the last couple of years. We've escalated them slightly to take into account the increases that seem to occur year over year with roofing and whatnot. Further in your packet, in the recommendation letter, there is a section that does kind of break the school down by area, cost per square foot, to kind of help you guys understand how we get to the total. And then from there, it's rather straightforward, it's just 2.8% of that budget. So all in total, it's quite a healthy square footage of roofs, you know, five facilities, just over 400,000 square feet in total that we'd like to get designed and hopefully implemented for the next two years with RTA.
And if I could jump in, speaking of square footage, that was somewhat of the idea, trying to have a little more even split, not necessarily, you know, there's three buildings one year, two buildings the other, but when you take them in totality with the amount of work that's available, you're talking about, you know, the proposed idea that we have currently with three buildings in the summer of '20, and the two buildings in the summer of '21. One would be a little more than 200,000 square feet in total. The other, in the next year, would be a little under 200,000 square feet. So we're trying to just sort of keep them evened out. We're looking at, you know, for this summer, Emerson was a no-doubter, that was, you know, the plan was to make sure we do Emerson in the summer of '20. That's a large building. So what we did was we found the next two smallest square-footage-wise K4s, and it turns out that one of those K4s isn't a K4, it's the Leboni-Curtechno Center, but it's the size of a, you know, of an elementary, because it is a former elementary, and Rosedale being the third building. So that helped match that work up. And then when we go to the second year, Randolph as a K4 is one of our larger, if not the largest as far as square footage, but it's on the larger side of the K4s. And then, of course, we have Riley, which is a former junior high school, it's similar in size to our middle schools and upper elementaries, which draw similar. So that's just a little bit of the thought process that we had going into this.
Okay. Comments or questions? Mrs. Burke.
Is this being treated as a new contract or as a change order on the old contract?
These would be a change order amendment to the existing contract, so it would be a change order.
Okay.
Yeah, it's proposed that way.
And so just so that the public knows also, at times, change orders are, because we find things along the way that we did not anticipate, at times, change orders are, is in this case, under the direction of the district, that we would like, you know, we had a good experience, we would like to continue this on.
Correct.
Let's go ahead and put it in, yes.
Yep, it would be similar to some of the bond projects, where we re-engage security designs or Arch Environmental year over year to continue with the services that they have been providing for Newscope.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. When is the timeline for getting the work done?
For the design work?
No, the actual roofing.
Oh, so again, the plan, and all we're bringing tonight is, you know, the contract for the design work, but our proposal right now is summer of 2020 would be Emerson, Leboni-Curtechno Center, and Rosedale. Summer work of '21 would be Randolph Elementary, Riley Upper Elementary. Now, those by no means have to be set in stone. The design would be the design, whether you do it this year or next year, it's still going to be the same design, it's just a portion of actually falling through, and then RTA, once it was done, part of their contract is to actually follow up in the summer work as well.
Thank you.
Mrs. Frank.
Is, sorry, I know that RTA, we've worked with them before, we've been happy with their work, are they competitively priced with their competitors, or how does that, or do we know where they stand on price?
Yeah, I think part of the value here is that they were very competitive initially when, and part of that was because they have extensive knowledge of the roofs themselves, having spent all that time up there going district-wide. The 2.8% is very competitive, particularly in a market that continues to increase.
We see no issue with the 2.8.
It's been very, it's a very competitive rate for the district, very fair, actually a very good value for a very quality firm.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Looking at the color diagrams, Mr. Francis?
Yes.
I note that there, we're all color-coded in terms of how long these roofs will last in certain portions, and there are areas, is the proposal to do the entire roof?
Entirety. When we come to these sizes, we're going to be doing the entirety of roofs as a general rule on these buildings. When we get to the high schools, those will be, needed to be split into sections. So we'll certainly, when that day comes, we'll highlight or we'll circle or square or whatever, the sections that we're intending, but they can be broken into areas. But right now, when the middle schools, the upper elementaries, and the lower elementaries, we're going to be proposing jobs in their totality. And these would be full roof replacements, and last Friday, some of the district team members met up with RTA and Plamoran at the buildings, they looked at some of the fascia, and that's going to be different than at Holmes and at Johnson, which was a full fascia replacement. It might just be some repairs, some partial replacements. Every building's going to be taken on an individual basis, and RTA will design it as, you know, as-needed basis, versus saying, hey, let's just replace fascia everywhere in the district when it's not necessary, and it wouldn't be, it would just be an added expense. We'll just do some repairs as needed, et cetera.
So to note, to follow up on President Johnson's question, these assessments were done in, this summer will be two years. So as you take a look at that, at the key, in some places where you see three to six years, you'd really be looking at one to four by this summer, and perhaps by time we get to that project in 2020 or 2021, you'd have to take it off of there as well. So this was the assessment in June of 2017. So just as a reminder to all of us, as we take a look through this, that this assessment, we're already two years in, so where you have some of the very poor conditions, those are certainly, obviously, our first priority as we move forward.
And as far as the weighted scoring that was, that RTA gave us for our 10-year plan, these five are the next five. They may not be one, two, three, four, five in order, but over two years, essentially doing the mixture of what Mr. Smith was talking about, trying to take square footage, cost, as well as condition altogether, we're trying to do, you know, looking two years ahead to sort of have our ducks in a row and say, we know we want to do these ones, because they are the next ones on the list, and just keep working through that in a systematic, but also a smart manner as you go through that list. And that's a very good point, Mrs. Oakwood, thanks for bringing it up. It's a very good point.
One other thing that I might add, too, some of you may look at the colors and say, one's more red than the other one. Remember, those are color ranges, so just because something's red, it could be on the high side of red, and if something's orange, it could be on the low side, and, you know, they may be only a little bit apart, but because we're dealing with ranges here, we use the overall weighted average in terms of our analysis.
Mrs. Burke.
And just for the benefit of the public that does not have this chart in front of them, we're looking at roofs that the vast majority of the roofs, we're looking at a scale that goes on a six-step scale from good to fair to poor to failed. We are looking at roofs that have the vast majority of them that are in the poor to failed category, anywhere in those three steps. So we're looking at roofs that absolutely need to be done now.
And even when you, you know, you take a quick look through, there's no blue and there's no green on any of them.
No.
I mean, that's pretty much what you're looking at, and despite some of the yellow areas, you're not going to go to a roof in those small sections.
Right.
When you're doing the project. Yeah, so it's, it is somewhat logical when you see the color coding. It's very helpful that RTA created this, because it helps guide us, especially thinking, like Ms. Oakwood said, and that was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, so these are high need.
Yeah.
Without question.
All right, this will be a sinking fund project, but we'll get you more details on the roofs themselves in the future when they get bid out as they come. Like I said, right now, we're just talking about design.
All right, regular meeting, regular agenda?
Please.
Great. Yes. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Item C is purchase of, purchase of appliances for secondary food classrooms, again, from the 2013 bond. Mr. Francis.
Thank you. From the equipment budget in the 2013 bond, we have looked at the middle school and high school, consumer sciences, foods classrooms. So all six of those schools offer that program, and those classrooms, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, are kitchens, actually multiple kitchens. We have traditional-sized refrigerators, and we have washers and dryers, and gas and/or electric ranges, and so on and so on. So at Emerson Middle School, when they had their building renovated, there was a replacement of their, their foods classroom appliances. So that was just 2016. So theirs are much more up to date. There's a couple of items that they're in need of, they're not on this list because they're not larger items, their mixers, and they're, actually, they're on here for just microwaves, but if you note them as seemingly being skipped, they're not being skipped by accident or to neglect them, it's because they've actually got a newer set of appliances. So just that upfront, as you look through that quote, they're broken up by building. In general, what we're looking at here is a grand total of $36,388,000 worth of appliances across, again, all six schools, because Emerson is getting microwaves out of this. But that list is extensive and essentially is replacing, if not everything in a classroom, near everything. There's a few one-offs, like some sewing machines in the middle schools and some mixers, but those are much smaller items that in short time, we can always replace in a different way. The Ferguson Facility Supply/HP Prox division, this is actually a contract pricing consortium. Ferguson Facility Supply is under a very large umbrella of one of the larger consortiums for contract pricing with regard to the state, and it's an intergovernmental alliance. So this has satisfied our need to bid. If you recall, a couple months ago, we did put it out to bid ourselves in the district, and we had no, no one bid on it. So we started doing a little bit more digging, and were able to come up with this as an alternative. So we, the board has satisfied, you know, has satisfied the requirement for bidding by using the contract pricing, and once, you know, if the board does end up approving this purchase, we'll follow through right away, and by the end of the school year, which, you know, would seem a little bit of a bummer for the students probably in the classroom right now, but, you know, we could have them by the end of the, end of the school year or early summer, be ready to go for fall with refrigerators and top-load washers and ranges, et cetera, in those classrooms. And we're excited about that. I've been to, talking to some of the teachers and through the buildings, via email or taking a visit to the room, they're very excited about getting some new appliances, as we all are, when you get that new refrigerator at home and you're super excited to get it into place. So, any questions?
Mrs. Frank.
What would we do with the old appliances that are still working, but?
Some are in better repair than others. The idea is that the ones that are in the best repair, we would repurpose them, we could hold on to them and move them in. I'll just give you a quick example. Frost Middle School, the principal and I have already spoken, he's got an area where students in the center program at Frost use some appliances, and those are not in good shape either. And the ones that happen to be coming out of here are at least better than those. So we said we can easily swap those out. Anything that's in decent enough repair, that would be a step up from something, we can keep, but for the most part, it's going to go to auction. You know, those would be a much smaller percentage that we would keep, because these need to, in general, go, and for the most part, we would go to auction and see if we can get something.
Or would they be able to be repurposed in, let's say, a teacher's lounge or something, or no? Is that something that would not be able to be done?
They're pretty ready to be.
Yeah, they're, yeah, we're going to, we're going to be changing these out, because they're not, they're not great, they're not as efficient.
Okay.
They're not running as properly, and that's really, there's not a lot of places for the larger items like the gas or electric range, the wall oven, those aren't going to go anywhere else.
Okay.
You're talking about a microwave, and that's what I was talking about at Frost, like the microwave that we might take out is in a little bit better shape than the very, very, very old one, but for the most part, we'll try to get something.
Yeah, I was just thinking a refrigerator, you know. I've been in some of those lounges, teachers lounges, so, all right, sounds good, thank you.
Mrs. Frank.
So we were in the business of shopping for appliances, and I'm just curious, when we looked at it, they're all Frigidaire, one brand is that, because that's the best, it was the cheapest? Like usually, they, you know, they say this washer is the best, but this dishwasher is better, and this brand. Was there a reason we decided, just for consistency, or?
Frigidaire is an economical brand at a good price, and it's what we have, and if you walk through those, those classrooms, very, very high percentage of items are Frigidaire items to begin with. It's just a brand that we traditionally used in there. It's just a cost-effective, and they've lasted. I'd love to get a wolf somewhere, but I don't, I don't think they would be frowned upon, I would think.
Yes, yes, okay.
Mrs. Burke.
We've spoken in the past about items going to auction. Where do those actually go, and what happens in that process?
It's actually all done online.
Okay.
And there's a third party that runs And there's a third party that runs the auction. They get pictures, you know, we tag prices. It's all done electronically, and then when it's all said and done, the, it is the obligation of the purchaser to remove the item, transport the item, and then, you know, we take the lion's share of the profit, and of course, the third party who ran the auction gets their cut.
Okay.
Generally how it works.
Okay. And then those funds go back into the general fund, is that correct, or?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else?
I'd ask for that.
On regular.
Please.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Johnson, that concludes building inside.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. That'll move us to item four, our finance committee and our chair, Mrs. Bonnefield.
Oh, Mrs. Oakus, we have like three hours before the last one.
Well, then let's settle in.
All right. So we're going to talk about the resolution in support of the governor's proposed budget, and Mrs. Oakus is going to assist.
Thank you. So to my board colleagues, we had an opportunity to take a look at this last week in our study session. As you know, Governor Whitmer has made her budget proposal with regard to, well, the entire budget, but we were specifically focusing on the school aid portion of the budget. And as we took a look at the tenants of the budget, one of the things that I know was very important to our board and to our district administration was that many of the recommendations that came out of the school finance research collaborative, so we'll refer to that as the SFRC, are reflected in this budget. And we felt that the importance that the governor placed on recognizing the study, and this study, as you know, took a look at what it costs to educate a child in the state of Michigan, and also what the added costs were for students that had additional need. And the governor has proposed a school aid budget that reflects many of the SFRC's tenants, and that is something that in our realm is something that we appreciate greatly because we know many of those added costs are taken, are provided to our students, but are taken from our general fund budget. And so we took a look at this resolution, and I don't, President Johnson or Mrs. Bonnefield, if you'd like, we can go around and have each member of the board read a line or a section from the resolution. And I did make the changes, I hope reflective of our discussion from last week, and we would like to bring this to the board next week for our regular meeting for your, again, your review and your consideration for approval, so that we may send it not only to the governor, but to our local legislators, so Senator Paul Hinky and Representative Paul Pucksky, as well as the chair of the appropriations committee, as well as the governor's office.
Mrs. Bradford, would you like to start?
Sure. This is the resolution in support of Governor Whitmer's budget proposal. Whereas the Michigan Constitution requires the state to support a system of free public elementary and secondary schools as defined by law, and?
Whereas the work of the nonpartisan School Finance Research Collaborative has provided Michigan with comprehensive recommendations on how to change our approach to how we fund Michigan schools to fully prepare all students for careers and success, and?
Whereas the SFRC and other school finance studies have illustrated the need for significant new funding for K-12 schools in addition to changing how these dollars are, how those dollars are allocated in order to reflect the unique needs of each individual student, and?
Before we go any further, do we want to make sure that we're all good with each section before we go to the next?
We can do that.
Okay.
Do we want to go, so on Mrs. Bradford's section?
For the first three, are we, are we good on those? Any suggested changes?
They're good?
Okay.
Okay.
Whereas Governor Whitmer has released a proposed 2019, 2020 school aid budget that reflects research and recommendations of the SFRC, and?
Anybody?
Good with that?
That's good.
Okay. Mrs. Burton?
Whereas Governor Whitmer's proposed 2019, 2020 school aid budget represents an historic and necessary investment in schools across Michigan, and?
Guys, anybody? Okay. Mrs. Jarvis?
Whereas Governor Whitmer's proposed 2019, 2020 school aid budget would provide additional funding and resources to better serve the students of Livonia Public Schools, and?
Anybody? Good?
Whereas Governor Whitmer's budget plan emphasizes the need for the state to properly fund early literacy programs, special education programs, career technical education, and programs for at-risk students, and?
Are we done? Okay.
Whereas groups representing Michigan's business, education, school aid, labor, and environmental communities have come out in support of Governor Whitmer's educationally-focused budget recommendations as the right path forward for the children and future of Michigan.
Good? And?
Chris. Oh, Chris. I really, I don't feel like this was in the last one, but Governor Whitmer's educationally-focused budget recommendations, the right path forward for the children and future of Michigan, I think is really the heart of what, why we're doing this is.
Yes.
Because it's so educationally focused. That piece of the budget has been drastically different than what it has been in the past, and so I think that that wording is really, really wise. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
School districts in Michigan must approve next year's fiscal year budgets by July 1, 2019 in order to appropriately plan for the allocation and utilization of funds in a way that will best meet the needs of the students.
So did that capture, we had a lot of discussion about that in trying to tie in the requirement for our board to have a budget adopted by July 1st, but also knowing that if the state does not have their budget complete, we will be going simply on our best recommendations at that time, which then, as the board discussed last week, provides a challenging scenario with regard to utilizing those dollars ready for the fall. So we wanted to capture that. Do you feel that that wording does that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Therefore, be it resolved, the Livonia Public Schools School District believes that Governor Gretchen Whitmer's school and school aid budget recommendations put the needs of our students first and foremost, and we encourage the Michigan Legislature to support them. Good? And President Johnson?
Therefore, also be it resolved, the Livonia Public Schools School District strongly urges the Michigan Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the fiscal year 2019, 2020 state budget prior to July 1, 2019.
Good job.
So we have to have our budget done by July 1 of 2019, and I guess there's not any way to ask them to, right, because then?
Speed it up?
Yeah, because if they're getting it done the same day that we're doing it, then?
Well, this is the time in which they're supposed to have their budget complete. And so rather than picking an arbitrary date, we're choosing the date by which they are supposed to have it.
So that is, so legally, they have to have, or they're supposed to have theirs that for July 1, and we are supposed to have ours done by July 1? That's the way it normally goes?
That, normally, that has been, their practice for the past, I would say, I think at least six years, has been to have those budgets done prior to July 1 so that school districts had those dollars and those amounts in place in order to do their proposed budget.
And have they had them?
Years prior, we have not had budgets at that point in time, and we have had to go on our best estimates with regard to the anticipated revenue coming from the state.
Okay. I had, Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. So my concern is with the last "therefore." Typically, we see several iterations of state budgets proposed. This entire resolution is referring to the governor's state aid budget, and we like what we see with the focus on education. However, history has told us that we can expect to see other budgets proposed, which may or may not be as friendly towards education or as supportive as the budget proposed by Governor Whitmer. This final "therefore" assumes that we're still talking about Whitmer's budget. It doesn't directly say that the budget that we strongly urge the Michigan Legislature to pass and the governor to sign should be a budget that is friendly towards funding of education. We could end up with a budget going for the signature of the governor that is not friendly towards it. So I think we need to put that phrase in that final paragraph, that final "therefore."
I think that they would assume that, but?
I don't want to make that.
I know. Mrs. Burton?
I agree with you, and I think that we actually had it covered in the two "therefores." We make all of the various points, and then "therefore be it resolved" that the Livonia Public Schools School District believes that Governor Gretchen Whitmer's school aid budget recommendations, sorry.
Needs, yeah.
Put the needs of our students first and foremost, and we encourage the Michigan Legislature to support them. Therefore, also be it resolved, that we'd like you to do it by July 1. So I think that, I agree with you entirely, and I think we've covered it in the two, in the "therefore" and the "therefore also." Basically, we're saying, therefore, we support this education-friendly budget, and we also would like it passed by July 1.
Can we change the fiscal year 2019, 2020 to this fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget, state budget?
You can, I had a different question, so.
Oh, okay, so, Mrs. Oakus, do we're gonna?
I?
Maybe, maybe my question dovetails that.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me, so my question is kind of Liz's, but it is, it's kind of going back to what we talked about, and I understand what you're saying to Mrs. Burton about, we do talk about education in every other sentence, but then this one just says, pass her budget, which is?
Says pass a budget.
A budget, which is a broad scope of a lot of things. And I think, although we've said it 100 times, it needs to say something about, we're talking about the education piece of it, you know? I just, I can, I can see the future of, I just think there's a lot of different pieces of the budget, and I just want to make sure that everyone knows that Livonia Public Schools Board of Education is strongly supporting an education, what, that sentence that you said, which I know you can't bring that back down here, but a budget that is educationally-focused as the right path forward for the children and the future of Michigan as well as Livonia. And I know you can't repeat that sentence, but it just seems like that last sentence is just to sign, and I think, Liz, your point is, sign this budget as it is right now, and I'm just saying to sign educationally-focused, educationally, you know, I agree, it will probably change, but just that we're saying it needs to be educationally-focused. The whole point of this is that it needs to have an educational focus.
Can we, can we do something like?
Go ahead.
So, and just to really shorten it so that we're not referencing the budget, but the Livonia Public Schools School District strongly urges the Michigan Legislature to complete the budget process by July 1, 2019?
Well, my idea was, could we, could we add to the fiscal year 2019, 2020 state budget, which, somehow which focuses on educationally sound priorities or something, however you do it, in that, in that, right after, to sign the fiscal year 2019, 2020 state budget, however you want to say it, focusing on the educational, you know what I'm saying, somehow in there?
I do like Tammy's, what she said, because you've said it, you know, you've said it so many times. So I think maybe leaving all that piece out of just sign, sign the whole piece of, but just saying, and do it by?
And get it done by July.
Because I think that the point of that last paragraph is July 1.
So if we say, the Livonia Public Schools School District strongly urges the Michigan Legislature to pass the 2019, 2020 state budget prior to July 1, 2019?
Or complete the budget process by July 1. I like complete the budget.
Let's step back for a second. In the title of the resolution, it says, "Resolution in Support of Governor Whitmer's Budget Proposal." So then the question is, the last "therefore" clause, what are we trying to accomplish in that sentence?
Mrs. Oakus?
May I make a suggestion that I think will help clarify this?
Yes.
I suggest that we strike the last paragraph, and if you move two paragraphs up, and where it says, "Whereas school districts in Michigan must approve next year's fiscal year budgets by July 1, 2019 in order to appropriately plan for the allocation and utilization of funds in a way that will best meet the needs of students," and strongly urges the state legislature and governor to complete their budget process by that timeline as well, and then we end with, "Therefore, be it resolved."
Like, yeah. All right.
Yes, I think that's much better.
We still have thought processes going.
Yeah, we do.
Are you good?
No, because that really technically is "therefore" and not a "whereas," but you're putting it in with a "whereas," because it's an action item and not an argument item or supporting item.
Well, then, you could just add that as a second "thereas." I don't know.
Which is back where we were.
No, no, no. You could say it just like Mrs. Oakus said it.
You could change it into a "whereas."
In order to appropriately plan the allocation utilizes funds in a way that will best meet the needs of the students, therefore, we strongly urge, the wording that she just used, and then the last is, and you still end it with, "Therefore, be it resolved," with Livonia Public Schools.
Say it again.
You mean you have a "whereas" with a "therefore" in the same thing? Is that what you're saying?
That's what we were trying to avoid.
No, no, no. Mrs. Oakus, are you, are you on the same page or no?
I'm happy to reflect the will of the board.
No, no, but do you understand what I'm trying to say? Or no, not yet? Okay.
You're suggesting that we have a "therefore" before "therefore be it resolved."
Right.
We have an initial one that reflects our urging of the legislature to complete the budget process.
Yes. If that was, I don't know that it needs to be another "therefore," but if that is appropriately, technically, I like the first one that you said, Mrs. Oakus, but if it does need to be a "therefore," you could add it there, but "therefore." But I liked the first way that she said it.
So you'd like it to reflect the budget, completing the budget process as opposed to adopting a budget, correct?
Right. Yes.
So we can certainly reword that and include it in the pack-up for your review?
Yes. I think that's a good idea.
I hate to be a pain in the ass, but.
Okay. Are we, Mrs. Burke, I just wanted to make a point in general. We discussed this at length in our study session, but for those who may not have been listening to that or in attendance at that, this Board of Education is making a direct statement regarding the school aid portion of this budget.
Right.
That is what we are directing here. We've been very careful in our phrasing of each one of these points to direct our, just our comments toward the school aid portion, toward the education focus of it. We are very intentionally not touching the rest of that budget. There are a lot of other factors going on in the arrest. We are specifically and exclusively discussing education portion.
Well stated.
Okay, my friends, I think we're good.
Got it.
We're good?
Oh, yes. We're good.
Can we come up with something else to talk about? No? Okay, cabinet over there. Mr. Johnson, that completes finance.
All right, that takes us to item five.
Oh, and we're voting on this?
Can I say one more?
Oh, yes.
Now you're already picked.
I know, sorry. In the resolution, at the top, in support of Governor Whitmer's budget proposal, should that say, "Education budget proposal?" Or no? Is that?
School aid budget?
School aid, something like that, because that's what we're really talking about, not her other budget.
For the title.
For the title. I mean, because in, you said in resolution to support a Governor Whitmer's budget proposal, but we're really talking about the school aid budget proposal. So would it behoove us to put that as our?
She is, so she is, I think we've made that pretty clear throughout the resolution, but she is not recommending a specific, separate budget.
Okay.
So her budget proposal is her budget proposal, and I think that's why the board wanted to reflect on the "whereas" each one. It talks about specifically the school aid budget, the educationally-focused budget, because it's really not a separate budget.
Okay.
It is the budget proposal in general, and then this is the school aid portion of the budget.
Perfect.
Perfect, I'm good with that, I just wasn't sure when you're...
Okay, all right, all right, we'll try again, ready? Mr. Johnson, that completes, President Johnson, that completes finance committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. That'll take us to item five, curriculum, and our chair, Mrs. Jarvis.
I have nothing to report today.
Thank you. That takes us to item six, policy committee, and our chair, Mrs. Burton.
I did not have anything new for the policy committee this evening.
Thank you.
Do you have any policy?
We do not.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. That takes us to item seven, personnel committee, and our chair, Mrs. Frank.
We do not have anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank, and that takes us to our last item, item eight, legislative committee, and our chair, Mrs. Bradford.
I believe we do have one item. Mrs. Okus.
Wow.
So close, I know.
Going in, us, our capital.
Yeah, I know. I did it. I did it.
It is still a record.
Okay.
I wanted to thank Senator Dana Paul Henke and her chief of staff, Mr. Centers, for joining me today, along with Allison Smith, our Director of Finance, as well as my colleagues from Northville and Plymouth Canton, the superintendents of those school districts, Mrs. Merritt and Mrs. Gallagher. We were able to come together today and spend time with our senator, talking about the school aid portion of the budget, and specifically, each section from the foundation allowance to the categoricals related to special education funding, at-risk funding, career technical education, MIPSers, and all the retirement funding. We were very appreciative, the senator spent over an hour with our team that we pulled together today. We had really excellent dialogue about the SFRC recommendations and how they were reflected in the budget, and we were able to share specifically how it would positively impact Livonia Public Schools and the students that we serve. And so that was a wonderful opportunity to have that dialogue today, and we certainly appreciate their time. I wanted to also mention that Congresswoman Haley Stevens is going to be hosting an education town hall this Thursday evening from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Vista Tech Center, and so she encourages anyone who, from the 11th district, who is interested in attending, to join her and a panel with regard to talking about education in the state of Michigan, and she will be listening from the perspective of the federal government. So if you would like to attend, that will be Thursday evening from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Okus.
You're welcome.
Oh. Who got the, was there a special invite for someone?
Is somebody on the panel? Somebody on the panel? No? Somebody's on? Okay.
Thank you. All right, I think that concludes legislative. Right away. No, that's Wednesday.
Okay.
I feel a beauty.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just closing out our group committee, we're all done.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford.
You're welcome.
That takes us to the end of our agenda, and hearing that we have no further business, then we'll say, "Good evening."
Good evening.
7:20. Good evening.